Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is May the 6th, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. Firstly, we have on the agenda, I'm sorry, the Sunshine Statement. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Madam Chair, agenda review, roll call. Dan Port.
President.
Daniel Marron, here. Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Auguste.
Present.
Thomas. Present. All in attendance. May I have approval of previous amendments, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Firstly, the agenda is ordinance number one, first reading. Concerning, I'm sorry, number five, thank you, sir. Concerning rent control regulations and amendment chapter 215 of the City Council. N B A, should we turn it new or add to just an explanation?
Oh, yeah, too.
Thank you. Yes, it brought to my attention that there was a request to prepare ordinance to address the issues of rent control in the City of Pleasantville. So what I went ahead and did was to go ahead and prepare an ordinance. Today would be the first reading by title only for a rent control ordinance that would, amongst other things, propose amounts that would be allowed for annual rent increases. Would also propose a rent control board to be established that would oversee that and would deal with those issues as a release of that for landlords have concerns in the ability to come before. But it does also provide for certain new construction projects and new mortgage projects that would be allowed to establish their new rental amounts at the beginning of their establishment.
Anyone from council? Right, Madam Chair. Okay, next is Resolution 66 authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes for disabled veteran. Any questions? C and N. Resolution 67 authorizing issuance of duplicate certificate pursuant to chapter 99 of the public law of 1997. Any questions? C and N. Resolution 68 authorizing the change order for a decrease of $72,239.27 and the contract to a command company for the old term type improvements project. Any questions? C and N. Resolution 69 authorizing acceptance of the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Emergency Building Inspection Program. Madam Chair. I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Yang. Any question? Yes, please.
Okay, for those who are not participants of the, I believe, Public Safety Committee, the committee has recommended that this item be come before full council for consideration. It's something that was presented by the governor under the Department of Community Affairs for when there are state of emergencies that we would have a pool of licensed professionals that can assist during times of emergency. So specifically, this is related to building licenses and our building inspector has agreed to be in that pool. So this is our resolution that will support our participation in that program.
Counsel, any questions?
Question. Our building inspector's leaving, who's gonna take his place?
It's not our construction official, it's the building inspector that is not leaving.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? C and N. Resolution 70 establishing an opiate settlement checking account. Any questions, counsel? C and N. Resolution 71 endorsing the Baccolus Urban Interfessel Assistance Fund project entitled Pleasantville U E C Fireworks Project in the amount of $91,281.06. Any questions?
What is that for, fireworks show, what is that?
Yes. So this is for a summer event. It's slated for four different dates. All of the fees will be paid for through the grant. And we're hoping to have this presented as a kickoff for the Lake Bay Park.
I understand, thank you. Do you have a question, have they received the grant yet? Or?
The grant's already in place.
It's in place.
Any other questions? C and N, Madam Chair. Resolution 72 grant approval of a cultural unity event at the Woodland Avenue Park on May the 11th at June. Any questions? C and N. Resolution 73 grant approval of the annual American Cancer Society Charity Bike Ride through the city on June the 2nd from 6:30 AM to 10:30 PM. Any questions, counsel? C and N. Resolution 74 grant approval of movie nights at the Lake Bay Waterfront Park on July the 17th, 31st, and August the 14th, 28th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Any questions?
This is just another community project that we will have slated for the new park. All the fees or expenses will be taken on by the presenter, which is Jonathan Diego Law Firm. So excited about that. It's one of the events that we're trying to get the families to stay in town and utilize our part. So we're looking forward to that event.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Resolution 75 grant approval for the annual Atlantic City Drive Line through the city on September the 14th from 4:00 AM to 1:15 PM. Any questions? C and N. Resolution 73 is an add-on providing, 76, I'm sorry, provide anticipation with the state of New Jersey Federal Grant Program administered by the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
Sir, initiation. Yes, so this grant was awarded in January of 2024. Typically, the department, due to whatever their allocation is for the municipalities throughout the community, give a certain amount of money to the municipality. The amounts change every year. This year, the amount is $67,225. We utilize that grant money to offset some of the salaries for our police officers. And of course, as you see in the resolution, there is a match from the city. So it's basically $67,000 that's coming into our budget to help offset police officer salaries.
Any questions, counsel?
Yes, Madam President. Do we have control over what changes the amount every year?
We do not. It's based on a formula that is used by the state. And again, it changes every year. Once you think you got the formula down pat, then it changes again. So you never know what you're getting. So it's really one of those things that we just, we take it and we anticipate getting it each year to help offset the police budget.
Thank you.
Madam Yang, is it just for police salaries or for other things?
Specifically for police salaries.
Thank you. Mr. Judy, do you want to say?
Good evening. And as Peyton said, the numbers do vary for, we've had a high of $90,000 and a lower of $46,000. So the numbers do vary. Go over to bill lists that were paid between last council meeting and this council meeting. You'll see at the top of page one for checks that were written before today. You'll see Mid-Atlantic Fire and Fuel, Fire and Air for $43,000, and further down one for $649,000. That was a grant from FEMA. It's, the grant is shared with us, Somerville Point, and Lake City Airport Fire Department. Out of this total of $700,000,000, we will be responsible for probably about $12,000 for that. The other portion, we come from Somerville Point and also the airport. The $649 is a direct grant that is for PPE equipment for all three fire departments.
Hold on a second, sir. So $757,000, $85,000, we're responsible for $12,000?
Probably, yes.
One more question, thank you.
Look down the bottom of the same page. We've had two payrolls because we were three weeks between council meetings, the pay of April 18th to the pay of May 3rd. You also see some payments going out of debt service to East Brunswick and also to Amboy Bank. We've refinanced a lot of our short-term notes into long-term notes. The rate we got for the long-term was 3.51%. And you'll see later on some bills to put, a couple companies helped us do this, get the rate down, and they're being paid out some approaches. So talking about our budget.
Question on page one. The township of East Brunswick is $7,281,000?
They lent us some money last year for a couple different things. For our short-term notes. And we got bonds from, I'm trying to remember, from a finance company? Not a finance company, but a company does a lot of these things. It financed for us. And we had to pay back East Brunswick.
Is this a final payment or we have a more?
No, that's their final payment.
That's their final payment?
We got, actually, we already got, we got the money in and we sent it back out. So we refinanced the whole thing.
All right, final payment, please. Thank you.
We look at the bills to be paid. Most of these, even though we were three weeks between council meetings, most of them are our normal payment bills. Although some of the unusual ones. If we go to page two. A little more half way down, Bowman Company. This is the first and second draw of the audit for 2023. They'll be working on audit from 2023. In fact, I think they were here today, they were here last week. And here, the left one down is the second quarter for JIF for property and liability insurance of $495,000. If you go to page three, two from the bottom. There's one of the companies that were involved with the refinancing. There's a lot of paperwork involved with this that we have to advertise. We have to, the whole book is bound. Probably 35, probably 80-page book that's bound that we keep a copy of. We also send things out to reporting agencies. So, and this money doesn't come out of our budget. It's come out of some of the proceeds from the sale of bond.
What type of binding, what type of binding are you doing, a will?
Sure, we're, there is a form of binding, binding of the nook. And we've got a copy in our office, it was like that thick. And it gives all the rules and regulations of the nook.
Thank you. I just didn't hold it well.
You hop on over down to page six. Near the bottom, Institute of Technology for 30,000. This is part of the Road to Pathways to Recovery, Pathways to Recovery.
Pathways to Recovery.
And did a training for, I believe, seven of our clients. They're involved in training.
Can you sit down? Yeah, yeah. Can you explain how to do that?
It's very odd, so. So you all know we receive the grant for Pathways to Recovery.
Yes, so.
Under the Pathways to Recovery, we're required to either send them to school and get them employed. So seven of the clients have gone through Ideal Institute of Technology for schooling. So this is the bill and the city gets reimbursed back through the grant.
Question. Who administered that grant for the four of us? Who's the minister over this pathway to recovery?
That is done by Mr. Peyton and Deja Brown.
And the people that we're sending to the school or in the job, are they from Pleasantville or just from county?
It's a county grant.
Do we know how many people from Pleasantville and we get infected by this grant?
You can, we'll get you the report, but under the grant, the criteria of the grant, we have to serve as a body who lives throughout Atlantic County. There's no Pleasantville preference. But because we're stationed or located in Pleasantville, most of our clients are Pleasantville. But we'll get you a grant.
Can I ask, since you have ideal here, what is the length of that course? How long does that course take for these people?
Three to six months.
Six months?
Three to six months. Depends what they, what the course they select.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Remember, we look at top page nine. You'll see S and P Global Rating. They're the ones who gave us a rating of A for financial bonds. Of course, there's always a cost for that. The idea is that based on our rating, our interest rate is lower. So we, over the years, our Phoenix survivors expect people to take close to $300,000 in interest based on the rating that we've received at a cost of $25,000. And that's within our normal, normal building. Any questions?
Yes. I'm sorry. Hold on, Madam President. On page one, I'll start there. For our easy pass for the $1,000, is that the monthly bill?
That's probably about eight weeks, two months.
Right, I have a question for number nine for childcare, medical transportation. This has a stipend of $10,000.
We have the bill on the way, why is this stipend? But that's their monthly bill for us, for them to do the medical EMS.
Genetics, thanks.
The genetics stipend. That is the bill.
So the bill's $10,000 a month for us to have childcare to service our community?
Yes, sir.
The only other question I have, sir, is reference to our Wi-Fi. Is that system up? I see we have Comcast Wi-Fi, but they got podcasts, varieties and different, different stuff.
Different, from some of our cell phones. We have AT&amp;T for emergency phones that are now with Fire Department. That's a completely different service. And we also have the Comcast, because we have small Comcast either towards the building. But we also have a fiber optic network that connects Police, Fire and City Hall. And that's $5,000 of two-month worth of fiber optics cost.
And which one is the fiber optic? Is that Comcast?
Yes. It's, it's through Comcast. At the time, we had nobody else's fiber optics. This was based on recommendation of our IT people to get fiber optics that's more powerful, faster and more secure.
Any other questions?
Yes. Back to my normal questions. And reference to our roof for the Fire Department and stuff. Just wanted to discuss that with the dates. The RPs and stuff, have we taken care of? The dates, which was?
We have bid opening tomorrow morning, thank God.
Bid open tomorrow morning, thank you. And I was asked, again, that's for the roof for the police?
Police, Fire, Dance.
And I guess soon we have to get on the right center of the City Hall?
Yes.
Police, Fire, Dance. And then my next question is a reference to the bids for the air conditioning. And I'm hoping those are air conditioners for both units, right?
We have one already and we're expecting another one prior to the next couple days.
So what would be our next course of action after the next couple days?
Once, depending on the cost, we will make a decision which one to go with. The one bid we have is below my threshold, which I can award, but I'm going to bid. It's below $44,000. I'm expecting the other one to be probably in the same area, just close to 30. But we can make a decision, once we get the other bid in, we can make a decision to go forward.
Can I be notified when this bid, when the bids are coming in, please? Because we would know in a, out of a little board. Hopefully, we have this air conditioning done and the Fire Department.
These are not bids or these are quotes?
These are quotes.
These are quotes, these are not bids. So you're not going to have a big date. These are quotes that we're soliciting for, for these because it's under the bid threshold.
That's just for the air conditioning?
Right.
If, if the number of quotes can come in above $44,000, we would have to go to bid for it.
So these are quotes for the air conditioning?
Correct.
Bids for the roofs?
Correct, correct.
Because that'll be more than $44,000 for the roof.
So we should have the quotes done by next week?
Yes.
That's, thank you. I'm done now. So with the quotes, once they come in, how long after that will we be starting the actual work on the air conditioning? Because starting?
I would say less than a week. It would be less than a week.
What starts?
Once we get them in, we will do a contract with the company. And I would say for a week, 10 days max.
Thank you. That'll be good.
Anything else, counsel? Thanks, Mr. Judy.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, is there anything to this time?
No, I don't see that.
Anything from counsel? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor? The time is now 6:51. This is the City of Pleasantville Council, City Council Meeting. Today is May the 6th, 2024. The time is, once again, is 6:51. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for invocation by Pastor Raglin in the flagpole, please.
Can we do a moment of silence for Mr. Bernard Todd, the pastor away?
Right, right.
Most of our lives today. Jim, God, and I, Father, we thank you for your old encompassment. Peace, honor, and presence. We know that where there is no counsel, purposes are disappointed. So we pray for your wisdom, your knowledge and understanding for the uplifting of both our community and the residents of our community. We pray for your grace to forge ahead, to do those things that glorify your name and celebrate your greatest creation. And we thank you tonight for the words spoken to upgrade our nation, to upgrade our community. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to this public for which stands my nation under God and the mission of living to be just as a law. Roll call, Madam Chair. Dan Port.
Present.
Daniel Marron, here. Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Auguste.
Present.
Thomas. Present. All in attendance. May I have a motion to dispense the previous amendments?
Motion, second.
All in favor? Mayor, in preparation?
I have nothing, thank you.
Next, we have public portion. First, we have Mr. Wren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I came in front of you to share a good news. Ideal Institute of Technology is officially in 1,000 Washington Avenue, open to serve. And trust me, we couldn't do it without all of you in Pleasantville. So we are very proud and thankful to the city council and city residents that we bring the very innovative work-based learning career college to Pleasantville. Addition to, May 22nd, I came here to invite the all council and city official. We are bringing first, private university in South Jersey in partnership with Ideal University. Sanctuary University, it's a 150-year-old private Methodist church run university in Hackastown, in Orange County, New Jersey. Ideal did a MOU collaboration and they are opening up their teaching site in our building with our partnership. This May 22nd is an inauguration luncheon. Every time when we hear, college is not for everybody, college is not for everybody. We are a vocational school. So technically speaking, it's good for business, for a vocational school. But if I'm sending, I have a twins. They're seniors and they're going to the college. I'm sending them to the college, then every kid, especially at-risk youth, community, from a lower-income community coming to Ideal, I want all of those kids to have an option to explore the college education. Without them exploring, we just keep saying then that college is not for everybody. They didn't experience. We are changing that with this partnership. Our students will have no cost. 32 credit in part, if they enroll in the Ideal Institute of Technology Youth Program or the folks who are referred to us through Pathways to Recovery, they have opportunity to take 32 college credit at no cost to them. So if any students enroll in Ideal Institute of Technology, if they choose to, they will have 32 college credit. And with our partnership with Centenary, they will have tuition-free, if they qualify for tuition-free associate or bachelor's degree. So I want you guys to join. And we did very good work with the building. Our students did the construction of it and we're proud. So we wanted to invite you, city council, city official, private tour on a May 20th, 4:00 PM. I was told that it's right before the council meeting, so everybody can. I would love to host you guys to show our students work because all the construction that you see in that building is done by our student by getting paid. And that's our mission and vision that we become a first career college that pays students to come to school. So again, I have some invitation on the hand, you guys also, but please, take your time to schedule it, that you come visit us and see, and join us to make Pleasantville a college town. Because we will invite all the students from South Jersey come for associate, bachelor's, master's and doctorate degree through Centenary University and that's going to happen right here in Pleasantville. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Sure. I just want to ask you about the credits because I know we're doing it at Pleasantville High School already. And I just want to know, like, what colleges does that carry over to? Because I know sometimes it doesn't go to all.
So Centenary University is regionally accredited by Middle State, same accreditation as Stockton University, Rutgers University. So just like any other public university or private university, except they accept, as long as the credit is matching their major. So somebody is in a Atlantic Cape Community College and they wanted to transfer over, whether they go to Rutgers or Centenary, the college credit is transferable.
Thank you. What would the age, the age level for this program?
16 and up.
Up to?
Any age.
16, 88?
Any age.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Ms. Renee Brown?
Good evening.
Lake Brown 126 West Adams Avenue, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I have just two questions.
I can't hear, it was grown.
I have just two questions. Okay. One, could you, Divina, could you give me the date that you, that you guys decided to move to public portion of?
I would have to get back with you on the exact date. But actually, because I'm going to go on my own, see when I post it. Well, you asked your next question, I want to research it.
Okay. My second question is, I want to.
So, so on the morning.
I wanted to know, is it possible for the city council committees, the chairman of each committee, can they give us a briefing of what's going on in their, in their area that they take care of? in their in their area that they take care of?
In our committee? In our committee? Okay, we can take that into consideration. Ms. Brown? My answer is March the eighteenth. Posted on our website, on the March eighteen agenda.
Okay, and that's, um, the last meeting that I came to, um, y'all y'all had an eighteen-minute meeting. Because I sat outside in my car. Um, I was waiting for somebody to arrive. And the meeting was over in eighteen minutes. I seen everybody leave. It says eighteen minutes on the YouTube. The the meeting was only eighteen minutes, but, and the prior meeting was supposed to have that started. I'm telling you why. I wanna know that information. The prior meeting was supposed to have had started twenty minutes early. And, but there was no notification given of it opening twenty minutes early. Starting twenty minutes early. And the eighteen-minute meeting, there was no public portion, I believe. No, the first meeting, I believe I was told that Carla said, you missed it. It's over. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, you really not.
Well, that's when it was, the meeting was adjourned at that time.
Mm-hmm, okay. I just wanted to let you guys know that you're not allowed to change the time of the meeting without notifying the puppet, because it's a puppet meeting. And if you need the law where it's written down, I'll bring it to you next time I come.
We never change.
We never change the time.
We never change the time.
We can't start earlier. We're aware of that, because of the Sunshine Law, but no, it started on time. It just ended with a short meeting. I I remember you being outside with that meeting. That's where I saw you, right?
Yeah, no, that was the last meeting.
The meeting for party.
Other one trying to that. But we never start early. We sit here and wait for six thirty.
Okay, well, when I was here, I was here by, um, what, maybe six twenty, six twenty-five? And you guys left at six forty.
That, uh, Mayor, yes.
So you had you had started?
That you had?
No.
Oh, okay. That was our work. Actually, that was our shortest meeting ever, but no one came to actually speak. There was no public comment. If you actually look at that meeting, no one came to speak at that time, but.
Okay, I'm really concerned, more concerned with changing the time of the meeting.
But Ms. Brown, we never changed the time. We can't commence it no earlier than six thirty without me doing a public notice according to the.
And the last meeting was not available to us online. Now, there was, I spoke to Carla about that outside. Remember, I said there, it wasn't online? You said it's posted online. It is. It's posted online. It's not posted online.
No.
And the fireman said, no, it's not online. And the policeman said, no, it's not online.
No. But. We were, I'm sorry. We were talking about the website. The website was down. And then, remember, Ms. Peyton and the mayor had walked past and I guess, I think I asked you, Ms. Peyton.
You asked me about where the website was down and I said, just been working on. The web, she asked me about the website.
I'm sorry.
She only asked me about the website.
Okay, but I always, I'm asking about that because whether it was the website was down or whatever it was, we weren't notified. And we are supposed to be notified. It's the law.
Ms. Brown. Yeah. Hey, man, I'm sorry, man. Come here. Ms. Brown, that is correct. We have some technical difficulty, because our website is, uh, given, is ministered by the county. However, if it's not on the website, please, by all means, come to City Hall, because it has to be posted in the public area, which is posted on the City Hall bulletin in the hallway. And you want to call me, I will email you, fax you, and give you the agenda. However, it wasn't available on website, because we had some technical difficulty.
Okay, I understand.
But it is posted, you know, on our webs, on our bulletin.
Normally it is. I have the one for today. I got that.
Every Friday is posted.
That one was not, and that was the one that.
No, no, no. That one was posted on the bulletin. It wasn't posted on the website because of our website. Ms. Ms. Brown, I I know my job there. Every five o'clock, if before five, it's on.
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm not. I'm trying to assure you that it's there. Yeah, I'm trying to assure you that it's there. And it's, so if Friday you can't make it by Monday morning, it is posted. We have to, my law has to post it. So it was there. It wasn't on the website. That is accurate.
Okay, that's all I said?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And I appreciate.
Yeah, I just, look, we most assuredly did not change the time of the meeting. We do start at six thirty. Very prompt. She did it tonight at six thirty and nobody was quite ready, but we don't change the time of the meeting. And the meeting that you saw that, when the president said it's over, we had already had public portion. Nobody, maybe somebody spoke?
No.
We left, right? Nobody spoke. And then, when we adjourned, we had already adjourned the meeting and somebody was trying to speak at that point. It was adjourned, and that's when council president said, no, it's over. So we weren't cutting anybody off. We were going through our proceedings.
Okay, I'm not accusing you of cutting anybody off. I just wanted to understand about the timeframe and how that happened. And I know the last one, when I was here, it was over by six forty, because I was sitting out there watching everybody leave. So I'm asking the question and I'm also saying, what, after asking the question, I'm also saying, if you have to to let us know if you're gonna move a meeting, or change a meeting, or change the time.
It was never heard. That's what they kind of say.
I heard that. I heard that. I'm not trying to go back and forth. I'm just telling you what I came up here and asked you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And I would also appreciate you giving consideration to the committees giving us a briefing on what's happening in each committee, so we know what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Jones?
Good evening, everyone. That was an evening.
No, no.
I'd like to thank you, City Council, the committee, and all those involved that actually bring us a rent control order, Mr. Pleasantville. I feel it was much needed and I'm looking forward to that actually going into effect. Can you give us any kind of like rough time or timeline as to when you think it may be going into effect?
Well, in the next reading, in the next reading.
May the twentieth.
May twentieth?
May twentieth.
Excellent. And basically, what is the fundamental rate of increase that will be available yearly?
So it either be based on, excuse me, one second. Consumer Price Index, or no more than five percent. But there's more to it, so you need to read the ordinance, which will be available now that the first reading has occurred.
Oh, very good. I think that's the numbers that'll serve our community well. I mean, if you're paying, that that means if you're paying thousands of dollars of rent.
No, no, so so there's a lot more to it, so you need to read, you have to read the ordinance.
But it doesn't it doesn't break down to any kind of simple way of looking at it?
No, there's no simple way of looking at it.
Wait till I read it.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Jones, numbers are numbers, so if you figure it out.
Yeah, I I I, now that it'll be available, I'll read the ordinance and hopefully everything's.
Mr. Jones, you wanna answer that?
I I do, um, I heard everyone say May twentieth, so should it pass as a second reading, we do have to give consideration to all of the landlords, and we'll be sending out those notifications. So it may not take effect May twentieth, but it will be sometime thereafter, because we do wanna take consideration for the landlords and notify them.
Good, good, good. Very good. Um, the second item I'd like to bring around, I brought this to the attention of a few of our council persons, and I just wonder, has it been addressed, like, coming down the bike path from Northfield, when you hit Ridgewood Avenue, the stop signs are white? And I.
Yes, sir.
Are they still there?
Nope. Over to the B A, and we are working on having those stop signs. We've already ordered them to be replaced. I brought it to the committee's attention, and I was advised that the stop signs, we already ordered them, so they're gonna be taken care of, sir.
Great.
Thank you for for setting that.
And there's one other issue that I'd just like to bring to the attention at large, and I did share this with a couple of my council persons. There's a haunted house on our bike path that needs to be taken down. Apparently, it's a house that hasn't been occupied for probably twenty years. And it's basically falling down from the center. And it's right on our bike path about a quarter mile from the Northwell, Northfield entrance, and I think it would serve us well to not have this on our bike path. So I I know there's a process of kind of demolition and condemnation and all that, but I would appreciate if City Council would give consideration to get this ice war off of our bike path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
That's you?
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
Oh, well, that's you, okay.
We are aware of the.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It just says Carrington?
Yeah. That would be the missus.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Um, I just have a few questions. Uh, Tricare, I heard the report that, are we paying them ten thousand dollars per month?
Yes, that's what I was just told.
Okay, well, we did, um, our school did put in a complaint against Tricare. Who else do they service besides Pleasantville?
What other communities do they serve?
Mm-hmm.
I believe Cherry Hill and somewhere else. But locally, they serve the main, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But there are other communities.
Okay, because we found that these, um, the the ambulance drivers, they don't, they're not familiar with the city. We had someone at our school that had a stroke, and they were not able to get to us, so a lot of us had to go outside and try to direct them how to get to the school. And they said they kept missing it, because they don't, they don't know these streets. So I just was wondering, who was training them to be familiarized with the street? I just hope we don't need their services that much. That means nobody's being sick in our community. But I just, we did lodge a complaint against that company, because they could not find us. They could not locate us. Sure of us taking a person down the stairs ourselves, up the stairs, I mean. Um, they they, it was not good. It was not good. So, um, the other thing, we had talked to the mayor at at some of our meetings about affording us the detailed agenda, so we can see what you're seeing. Because these, um, this this agenda is very, very vague, and it, sometimes it doesn't even make sense. And we don't understand, and I, sometimes I don't understand, I'll speak for myself, what it is that you're 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 reading the ordinance for. So we need to see something more detailed, put it online, so that we can look at it and read it. If 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 that, that's something that could, you can afford the community.
Sometimes I did take that back each time that you offered it, and our court does have an explanation for that. Go ahead and explain. Mayor, clerk? And for listening. Um, where do I begin? By statute, we have to give the ordinance, so the actual agenda, so that's what we do. We do provide explanations of what those items are, as I convey to, um, is it P C C, Love Sand and Brown? Um, those items are actually work items, so a lot of times the full council does not get to see the agenda. Some of those items are only being reviewed by three council people, without the other four being aware and being made known of the actual agenda. So when it gets out on Friday, sometimes there's only three council people who are aware of the item. If we give it to the full public, we don't allow the actual council to actually review it and then decide if they wanna proceed with it or pull it. So that is the reason why, oh, people myself. So that is actually the explanation why it does become public, such as ordinance, once it passes first reading, in addition to any other items that they have reviewed. But it doesn't allow your board members to actually review it prior to the stakeholders.
So how do they vote consciously? How do how do they vote on an ordinance that they're not even aware of?
Well, I can't.
They have to trust the three that reports to them?
No, they trust the three by committees to bring it to the full body. However, they get it by Friday to allow them to review and ask questions to the B A by Monday before the meeting occurs. If they decide collectively that they don't wanna pursue with it, the other four who weren't made aware of it, then that gives them opportunity to pull it before the puppet does. So let's say we we did this ordinance, and you all said, the public says, we don't agree with all this. Well, we don't give the body a chance to actually, so that is the reason why. By statute, they only have to show you the agenda. Uh, two years ago, the city decided to actually give the whole explanation. I don't think it's vague. So if there is a lack of a knowledge to it, it could be because of the fact that you don't work with it. I don't think the explanation is vague, because we do disclose the dollar amount. So when there's grants, you see how much the dollar amount, if there's contracts, you do see how much the city's gonna be spending on it. So I think this full disclosure address.
So you're saying three people on the council are afforded to see a detailed agenda?
When you look at the agenda to the right, that's the committee that's actually sponsoring the item. So they look at it on committee wise, and they review it with city officials, and then they present it to the rest of them, saying, because you're only allowed to have three at the committee. Because more than that, then it becomes an open public meeting, and the public has to be involved. So it allows three to sponsor, but this meeting allows them all collectively to decide if they wanna pursue with it.
Do those three ever rotate?
Annually. And they do rotate. If they can't make a meeting, then there's another councilman, uh, councilperson that sits standing instead.
Okay, so, so when we want to speak to each person who handles whatever committee, that's not committed to us?
No, you just can't, yeah.
Chairperson.
Chairperson.
Back to me. Oh, okay.
There's a chair, and then there's two councilpeople that sit there.
And and when do we have opportunity to speak to those chairs?
You could call my office, and I can give you that number, or you can leave a message. You can speak to them, or whatever.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then, the other thing, idea, I'm not sure if you can answer this, and this gentleman may can answer it. We have a shortage of paraprofessionals. And one of the criteria for them to be highly qualified is to have sixty credits. And I was wondering, do you take those type of students, adult students, that will come in and give sixty credits in order to qualify, to be highly qualified as a paraprofessional? That's a aid in the classroom, whether it's special ed or regular ed. Do you train those people and and for free too?
We will be from June twenty-fourth with the partnership of Centenary University. Yes. We are a clock-hour school. We're a vocational school. We don't offer college credit.
Okay.
Now, we will be able to offer it with this partnership.
Okay.
So, and a very unique program that Centenary University has is to prepare our future educators.
Okay, the other question I had, too, are you saying that they get thirty thirty-two credits in six months?
No.
Okay.
It takes a year. They have ability to take up to thirty-two credit while they are enrolled at Ideal. That's how it's no cost to them.
Right.
If somebody, but somebody's not enrolled at Ideal, and they wanted to enroll directly, they can, just like they would enroll at any other university.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Page?
We have three minutes or?
Yeah, you do.
The clock went off a long time ago. Jerome Page, two thirteen West Pleasant Avenue. I just wanna say thank you to all the council people up there, man, for being here, attendance. Very good. Um, when you change the agenda with the public portion, did the council vote on it?
Well, I didn't make the change.
Okay, did the council?
So the council president, it's no time. You did not, no.
Whenever you change a legal document as an agenda, it has to be approved by the body. Does anybody come in and say, hey, change it, no, the body changes.
It doesn't have to be, no, the public portion and how the agenda is read, it doesn't have to be voted on. The council president has the ability to change how the how the agenda is going to be utilized. It wasn't for an actual specific meeting. It was done prior to the meeting.
No, but I'm talking about, you're actually putting the public portion at a different location on the agenda.
Correct, so that doesn't have to be voted on.
Well, I'll show you differently.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, the court system in Pleasantville, is that part of the budget?
Yes.
Do we, do anybody know what that budget is for the court system? Court system just approved a agreement with Atlantic City Goals, that they do some of the cases in Pleasantville. The problem I have is I had a case in, I have a case in from two thousand twenty-two of Met, and still today, it hasn't been heard. It is a criminal case, violent harm against me. I'm surprised, because the candidate is running for president for mayor, and I think if he feels that he can get away with the court system and do whatever he has to do, then if he ever becomes mayor, the court system is done. Okay? Uh, and I'm only saying that because the threat is still there on me. When I see him out, I gotta be careful how I look at him. I gotta be. Listen, I just turned sixty-three, so I'm I'm an elf, you know? And there's just no respect from this particular person, Julio Sanchez, I bring his name up. I've talked to some council people. I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to the business administrator, Mike. My case was eventually transferred over to Brigeteen. Brigeteen found it, had the hearing and the person didn't show up. Second warrant for his arrest. He finally just paid it not too long ago. I'm still waiting for a hearing because it's the court system. I can take care of my own business. I can make sure as a man that I take care of who's threatening me. But I'm not doing that.
So, Mr. Page, I'm going to tell you that you need to speak to the court clerk about that issue, and deal with the courts about that situation.
Sir, this is my time, and I'm addressing the council. I've talked to you privately.
Yeah, I was trying to give you an answer.
I got you. I've heard that before. And I have contact.
Mr. Page, you have ten seconds.
Okay, the problem is, when I call the number for Pleasantville Court, it goes right to Atlantic City Court. I cannot hear anything from this court of why my case has not been scheduled. Okay? I'm asking, as a taxpayer, help us out, help me out on this. Because if things happen the way it's going to happen, we're in trouble. Thank you.
Yes, if a public portion, they have a motion to close public portion.
Motion, second.
Okay, first is ordinance number five, first reading concerning rent control regulations amending chapter two fifteen of the city code.
They have a motion.
Motion, second.
Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance move the second reading scheduled for May twentieth. Resolution sixty-six authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes to a disabled veteran.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution sixty-seven authorizing issuance of duplicate certificate pursuant to chapter ninety-nine of the public law of nineteen ninety-seven.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
May I have a second? Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution sixty-eight authorizing a change for the four decrease of seventy-two thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents in the contract to command company for the old time bike improvements project.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Did you get that, Madam clerk?
Yes, I did. Rock Hall, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution sixty-nine authorizing acceptance of utility department of community affairs emergency building inspection program.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rock Hall?
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy establishing an Oprah opioids assembly checking account?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I will pause if I'm off the door. First motion, Camona, Correa, and second, my son, so, okay, thank you. Rock Hall? Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-one endorsing a proposed urban enterprise zone assistance fund project entitled Pleasantville U C fireworks project in the amount of ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and zero six.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second. Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-two granting approval of a cultural unity event at the Woodland Avenue Park for May eleventh.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rock Hall?
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-three granting approval of the annual American Cancer Society charity bike ride through the city on June the second.
May I have a motion? Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-four granting approval of movie nights at the Lake Bay waterfront park on July seventeen, thirty-first, and August fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rock Hall, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-five granting approval for the annual Atlantic City triathlon through the city on September fourteenth.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Rock Hall?
Second, who is that? Camona.
Thank you.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-six, an add-on approval justification with the state of New Jersey federal grant program administered by the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Rock Hall?
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laram?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?